Let's please rise for the budge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with reason and justice for all. All right, roll call, Kelly.
Mr. Betterbit?
Here.
Mr. Case Layel?
Excused.
Ms. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Rakowski?
Excused.
Stedler?
Excused.
Mr. Sam?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Excused.
Ms. Suer?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here. Fire exit, Matt.
Exit certainly back, the L G I.
All right. And tonight's workshop is about the, from Tetra Tech presenting on the smart bond.
Evening, thanks for having me. My name's Steven Schiller. I'm with Tetra Tech. I'm working with the school district on their smart schools investment plan focusing on high-tech security, access control. And this presentation is one of the requirements for smart schools. It's going to give you a preliminary walkthrough of the process, the preliminary scope, and some budget figures. So here on the board is the process for smart schools. It's a very detailed lengthy process. At the top you can see is the district consultants stakeholders. We, and we had that, we had a committee meeting, sat down and talked about the original plan, you know, some ideas, some concepts, looked at some plans. And then we're sort of at the second level right now, which is the preliminary board approval. So we sort of walk through this presentation, answer any questions, and if the board feels they can do a preliminary approval, after this approval, you would put the preliminary plan on the district website for 30 days and put a link for questions or comments. So if anybody in the public could see they had any questions, comments, concerns, they could post those. And then after that 30 days, the district can have a public hearing, which can be a part of a board meeting, which would, you know, sort of go through and get an approval of that final, you know, final plan for the smart schools. And then at that point in time, you work through final approval, and then you submit that plan to the state, which is smart schools, then unfortunately sits up there for 12 to 18 months, waiting for their approval. So it's a, it's sort of a lengthy, lengthy process from beginning to end. And then during this time, Tetra Tech's process is, you have the smart schools process, and then you got the process of actually having to do documents and set them up, the facilities planning. At that same time, we'll work on that, drawings of specifications, send it up to the state for their approval. And once you get both approvals, one from smart schools, one from facilities planning, then you can start construction.
What about the state side of things? Aren't there supposed to be like some sort of convening of the commissioner and some other person and some other person?
Well, what happens is you go through three or four different steps as part of smart schools.
Yeah.
You submit it in, it'll show up on a site as initial submission. The, the state will review that, make sure there aren't any errors in your submission, and at that point, it'll go to expenditure review. That's the point where it sits there for quite a while. And then, once that gets reviewed, typically you'll have an amendment, they'll come back with some comments, and then you do a re-submission. Then, once that gets approved, it'll, it'll show up as a review board. Once that review board hits that, the review board's supposed to be monthly, they don't.
They don't, yeah.
They, they meet, then they went to quarterly, sometimes they don't even do that. But when the review board meets, that's when you get your official approval.
Thanks for that. I just, I just want to jump in really quickly, just to say that we had an original smart bond proposal that was done even before I came to Beacon. And so that original smart bond proposal was for laptops, for more Wi-Fi bandwidth. What else was in that original?
There was also some servers, some.
And, and also some teaching screens, no active whiteboards.
Yes.
So over the course of the last two and, two or three years, we didn't want to wait on the state to do all those projects, so we ended up funding every single one of those things through the Beacon budget. So this is, so we pulled that application back from the state because it wouldn't make sense to try to replicate that work. And so this is kind of our second attempt at this. I just wanted to say that for the public.
So here are the categories, the approvable categories for projects for smart schools. School connectivity, network switching, Wi-Fi, things like that. Community connectivity, which is a WAN connectivity from the school district that the public can access. Learning technology, devices, talked a little bit about that, computer, smart boards, things like that. Pre-kindergarten classrooms, if you had the need for that. But where we fall in is actually the last one, which is the high-tech security features. The Beacon City School District's eligible for, it's two, you know, 2.12 million dollars. That's their available amount of funding. And then just things that can't be included as part of any design or any plan, just pay for the salaries, software, and professional development. So, you know, as, as part of the plan, and part of what we're working on is, you know, sort of two separate systems. A closed-circuit district-wide IP closed-circuit TV system and an access control system, both fully integrated, so one system talks to the other. You know, and a lot of, initially, we're looking at, you know, looking at full coverage, interior and exterior. Now, that's something, you know, when we get to the final stages of the plans, you know, that can fluctuate, you know, one way or the other. But, you know, at this point in time, we've sort of, you know, sort of looked at both interior and exterior of the building and, and, you know, budgeted things for a full coverage. But that's, you know, again, to review, yet to be determined.
So just jumping in with the history again, one of the reasons we're targeting this camera system is Beacon started implementing cameras around 11 years ago, Henry. And so we have many of those still original cameras from that first installation. I think we did another installation of some six years ago. And so, so many of the cameras we're using are 11 years old, some are six years old, and all in need of an upgrade. And like you said, they're, our current system is not integrated at all with access control. And so this is something that we were probably looking to, if we didn't have smart bond money, we were probably going to try to fund some way or another through the general fund. And so that's why we want to go the smart bond route.
And then also, a system we're not upgrading, but we're going to integrate with is the public address systems in these buildings. So you can initiate lockdowns, you can have district-wide hall calls, you can have building-wide hall calls where lockdown messages get broadcast, building-wide or district-wide. As part of the access control system, swing cards would stop working, a lockdown, lights would flash any outside of the building. So, you know, people from the outside would know that the building's in lockdown and that's coming to the building.
And just a word about that, when we had the safety audit a year and some months ago from Alteris Security Consulting, one of the things they pointed out was R P A. Systems in a couple of our buildings just weren't performing like they should. So we started investigating, figuring out a way to do that through general fund. And it was just, the expense of doing that not through smart bond just didn't really make it feasible. So again, that's why we're working to do this through the smart bond proposal as well.
So here's a brief budget overview. Now, you're really doing high-tech security. That high-tech security includes your access control, all the network switching required for the full system, all the servers. So really, everything included is the 1,098,500. And then you go down to S S I P or S S B A allocation and estimated proposed expenditures. Now, get to another slide, it shows the expenditures a little bit more because we have some contingencies and incidentals included, and you see that in a slide going down. But that's, you know, again, that's full coverage, all the buildings, interior and exterior. With, and I gotta point, they're real high resolution. These are real, I mean, you're gonna see things in a, in a practical apartment. Again, the project scope, security cameras, interior, exterior, access control, you know, interconnect. And then everything's gonna be network-based storage, so it's not gonna be DVRs and things on CD-ROM. Everything's gonna be network-based storage. You know, right now, in a fashion of almost 200 terabyte of storage, so it's gonna be a system. So again, the, you know, the goal is to install access control, lockdown panels, security cameras, and then update the public address systems. And then, you know, another feature also is we, we plan on providing panic buttons in certain locations where somebody could instantaneously do a, do a lockdown, maybe just push a button and do a lockdown. You can do it on a district smartphone, tablet, or on a computer. So here's the budget sort of broken down a little bit more detail. Those are the numbers, 1.25 is that number that sort of showed up, but it sort of tells you what's for cameras, what's for access control.
What's on the contingency?
Well, contingencies would be, well, number one, you want, you want to try to include as much of the money in. So if you put your, if you put your S S I P in, you're allowed to put a contingency line item. So if you want to add a camera, or if you want to add some features and you're spending some more money, you don't have to go through the process of doing an amendment to your S S I P, which is, you know, a four to eight-week process. So you put a contingency line item in there just for any changes that might come up. And most of the time when we put these together, almost all the changes are just, you know, district, oh, we need a camera here, or, you know, can we do this here type of thing? I need another door of access control. So you can just add that in, and it's, it works easy with the smart schools part. The incidentals, because our fee, that's smart bondable, that's a, that's an included thing for smart bonds. So that's, not that that was our entire, but there's also some legal fees or anything else that the district might have that's smart bondable. So those are what those two line items are.
What redundancies you have in case you have to, just for the sake of continuity, continuity of operations, in case there's a problem or disaster?
So servers would be rate six, so, or rate five depending on, so you, you can lose hard drive and make a failover to other, other servers. So you, unless you have a catastrophic failure, if you lose a driver two or three, you, you're not gonna lose any data because it's gonna, you know, roll over to another, another server. Then you're gonna have a certain amount of days of storage, you know, usually you guys determine that. And then at that point, you'll start overwriting with the system. If you bookmark an event, those will never get overwritten. So something happened in the cafeteria, and you looked at it, you reviewed it, you bookmarked it, it's saved, you know, that's something that's there until you actually delete that.
So, I mean hypothetically, power outage, generators tick on, this is this point in time where there's no power?
Oh, yeah, you have, you have UPSs for 90 minutes of backup. And then when it starts running low on that, you'd have a control shutdown instead of, you know, so if you're, you're without powerage for, for 90 minutes, then, you know, at that point in time, you would have a control shutdown.
And a long would go off, I guess, tell people.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
UPS, okay.
So again, I put the, the project out, you know, in 2021 because, and again, that's all dependent on smart schools. When we get the S S I P in, how long smart schools takes, they could take a year, they could take, you know, Arlington was 19 months, William Flores 21 months. You know, it, it could be between 12 and 18 months. I, I was, I got real optimistic, but that was squashed quick because I thought when New York City and the 700 million got approved, that that was taking all the time for all the reviewers, but that hasn't sped anything up. So it's, so you gotta plan on probably, you know, 14 to 18 months. But then, you know, this is a, a project that doesn't have to happen in the summer. It can, you know, we, the contractors will work second shift during the school year. The district would prioritize what they want to have done and when, and we've worked to those schedules. And then just, questions?
Just with, with doing a, I'm over here.
Oh.
I don't know what it sounds like to you. Doing, obviously, making an estimate, you know, up to two years beforehand, this technology changes very quickly, but there's room to adjust when they finally approve it, if, if you decide, we decide that that's optimal.
Correct. And I can sort of, I can sort of give you a quick snapshot of what's gonna happen in 18 months from now. All the cameras are gonna change.
Yeah.
The servers are gonna change, the pricing's gonna change. So what you do after that 18 months is you purchase the equipment off a state contract. So, so you get, you know, exactly who you want, what you want, when you want. And at that time, when you're getting ready to write the purchase order, you redo everything, come up with the latest and greatest. You might, instead of an eight-megapixel camera, you might end up with a 16-megapixel at the same price, you get just a higher quality. And then you submit an amendment to smart schools, right off the bat, right when you write the purchase order, the amendment goes in. Because when you're looking for reimbursement, the invoices have to match the S S I P exactly. So to answer your question, you're gonna get the latest and greatest at the time of installation.
The plan includes your security for in the event of hacking or anything, to prevent hacking from happening or something? Because I mean, there is, there is remote access to the system, right?
There'd be remote access. Now, I guess I can't answer to the hacking into, I don't know what the district, you know, firewalls would be. But certainly, you'd want to give access to law enforcement and things like that. And what we typically do with the law enforcement is we give them a connection, but we keep that connection closed. Again, that's a district decision, but typically we keep that connection closed unless there's a lockdown. Then it opens up, so law, you know, they're not just in your system all the time looking at, you know, cameras and things like that. But, you know, that's a, a user-type thing. Obviously, district personnel would have a VPN, they could go into the system and, you know, sort of look at cameras. Because the, these camera systems now are very intuitive. They have what they call electronic tripwires. So if a building, elementary school closes at 11, and everybody out, you can turn on the tripwires. So if it senses movement, it sends somebody a text message, or an email, or a video, what, who's, who's in my building? And on top of the access control system, we're planning on putting door contacts on every door to the exterior. So if a door's ajar, if a door opens, somebody's getting a text message, someone's getting an email. So you sort of have all that information. And all these doors are sort of attached to cameras, so if somebody gets alarmed, the door to the gym's open, you can get to a camera and say, you know, okay, somebody stuck a sneaker in it, and the kids are out, you know, in the playfields. Yes?
The project does not include like facial recognition technology, correct?
Not facial recognition per se, because facial recognition would be, you have a database of known faces. The system has the ability to do appearance searches.
Okay.
So, so it's, and it doesn't store any information. So say I walk into, walk into your building, and, you know, you didn't know where I went. You could draw a bubble around me, a little box around me, and say, find somebody that looks like this. The system will say, okay, somebody in a blue jacket, bald, and it'll, it'll follow me through the building.
Okay.
Just on, you know, things, not my face, but my appearance. So it has that ability, that's a, that's a plug-in, so you can get it, or you don't get it, it's not an extra cost. But, you know, if you want to plug it in and make it work. You know, similar to license plate recognition, I mean, the system has the ability to do that, but you, you know, you have to buy the software to.
And that would require someone to look, watching it all, all the time, right?
Well, the system, the system has, it's a very smart system, so it, it has the ability to actually send messages, it has the ability to, if, you build a brand-new field, turf field. So, you know, we've done a lot of these, we put, and we plan on putting cameras out there, so it has the tripwires. So if anybody's on there, we can actually turn on lights, we can do an intercom. If somebody's driving the wrong way through your bus loop, they can send an email, it's tech message. So same with license, if you did license plate recognition, if you had a license plate known and you could send a message to somebody.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. In motion adjourn to executive session to review, to review the employment history of particular individuals.
Motion.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carry, five zero. All right, sorry for delay. Before we go on to the rest of the agenda, I'd like everybody to rise for a moment of silence for Patricia Petten, who served as, to serve the district for eight years as an employee of the transportation department and the food service department. Thank you. All right, in reviewing the agenda, we do have an item that we would like to add to the agenda. I need a motion to add Resolution 072219B.
Second.
Meredith P. Two, Anthony.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. And the resolution reads, before we vote on it, it reads to be resolved that the board hereby appoints William Rowan, certified as the school district administrator, permitted to the position of assistant superintendent of personnel policy, effective August 26, 2019, pursuant to the terms and conditions of employment set forth in the appointment provisions agreement. Any discussion of, I would say, welcome aboard preemptively before we vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carry, five zero. I'm sure Matt wants to say a little something.
Yeah, so we are very excited to welcome Dr. Rowan Bill to the district. Just a few things, we, we've been going through a process for this assistant superintendent position for the last month. And Bill's really been standing out through the whole process. So his resume, he was a special education teacher, he was a reading specialist, then he was an assistant principal for several years in Newburgh. And then for the last nine years, he's been a middle school principal at the middle school in Goshen Central School District. And so we really liked all the different things he did, the fact that he stayed in all those jobs a good length of time, and just showed a lot of consistency and commitment. In the interview process, he showed just a real authentic leadership side. Everything he talked about was about students, about improving things for students and staff in the buildings that he's worked in, about his connections with staff and students, so we're excited about that. And then, when talking with his references, they highlighted several things about him. One was just the fact that he is a great listener, a really great communicator, that he is a very transparent leader. He works hard with folks to come up with positive outcomes from difficult situations. He's always thinking about ways to improve things for staff, and especially for students. And he's just a really committed person. So we, late last week, were able to kind of finalize this, and we were very, very excited to welcome him aboard. And Bill, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the microphone for your first moment here, we'll give you a little round of applause.
Thank you, Superintendent Mondell. Mr. President, Vice President, and Marie Quinari.
Good.
Everybody else, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your support. Tonight, I, I feel like I'm the luckiest man in the world. First, because I have my beautiful family with me, my wife of 22 years. Kirsten, who's a special edu, she's a, well, special education teacher and music teacher in the Walch Hill City School District. I have my, my proud son Scott with me, going into his second year of college. And my wonderful, beautiful daughter, who is going into her soft, junior year of high school. I'm so glad and proud that they're with me tonight to help me celebrate this, this wonderful occasion. And second, I was, I was hired by the Beacon City School District. You know, I've been telling a few people that when I first moved to the area, the Hudson Valley, back in 1992, there were two places I fell in love with. One was, was, was Newburgh, and the other was Beacon. They were just two places, special places in my heart. And it's amazing how fate, you know, has brought me here to this time and place. I've done so many things, and I've, you know, I've brought so many opportunities in education. And, you know, I look forward to taking what I have learned and sharing that with the Beacon City School District. And so thank you for this opportunity. And as I've been saying to Dr. Mondell, I won't let you down. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And what, the great thing about coming here with your family is you get to go out and celebrate with them. And not make your kids sit through the rest of the board.
Good restaurant, some deep.
Thank you again.
Thank you. We'll talk soon. It's nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
And just funny, I did not know his wife was a teacher in Walch Hill until he told me last Thursday. I met him, and he was like, oh, my wife teaches in Walch Hill. I was like, oh, really?
Good night.
All right, so we do have other revisions to the agenda on 13.06, instruction L. We are going to remove H, which is responsive classroom number 17, R, rabatt middle school advisor number 15, and double H, admin coordinator number eight. Do we have any student or school presentations? Seeing none? Seeing some?
Uh, parent.
Oh, parent, parent groups, go ahead.
Yeah.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. We are Debbie Brennan and Rebecca Correles, and we are co-presidents, co-presidents of BAM, Beacon Advocates for Music. We wanted to give the board some updates on our activities and happenings over the past year, I'm sorry, over the past months. In December, BAM, together with Beacon Arts and Education Foundation, sponsored a quinceañera fundraiser at the Beacon High School winter concert. We raised roughly $200 at that fundraiser, and we are hoping to expand this to more schools in the coming season. So watch for that, get ready to buy a quinceañera. In January, Beacon High School hosted the Duchess County School Music Education Association Music Festival, Junior High Music Festival. BAM was there to help sell refreshments and to assist with food service for the many students, as well as for the visiting music teachers who participated in the festival. We wanted to just say thank you to name some of the music teachers who showed up for that, for that weekend. Big thank you to Mr. Rubenstein, Mrs. Wright, Mr. Head, Mr. Ezfrid, Mr. Cunningham, and Ms. Perigene. They showed up to assist with food service for approximately 800 students, which was not an easy task. Thank you also to many National Honor Society students who were there to give much-needed help for this big music event. In all, BAM raised about $664 at that event. BAM, together with Beacon Arts and Education Foundation, has procured about a $3,000 grant from the Newport Festival's foundation. And we have been working with music staff and our own BAM and B A E F members to deliver musical opportunities for students in Beacon through the administration of these funds. Mrs. Wright headed up an artist-in-residence program for guitar students at Beacon High School. These workshops focused on the songwriting process and guitar performance techniques. To use the remainder of this grant money. To use the remainder of this grant money, BAM members are hoping to collaborate now with Hudson Valley Folk Guild to create an opportunity for elementary students to attend a performance at Beacon High School. This is currently in the works. I actually just spoke with the representative from Hudson Valley Folk Guild today. We are grateful to the Newport Festival's foundation for this grant, and we are doing our best to administer the funds with the principles of promoting Pete Seeger's legacy in the public schools. So through grassroots efforts, Beacon Advocates for Music has raised around a thousand dollars in the, over the past, a good portion of the past year, which, this is all being pumped back into our school's music programs for the students in Beacon, and we're really proud of that. In addition to fundraising, BAM seeks to support students and teachers in other ways. We recently provided light refreshments for a dedicated group of instrumental students who came to Rambout Middle School last week to assist with demo lessons. We would like to highlight how impressed we were to see how many middle and high school band students, even recent graduates, volunteer to be part of this process during their summer vacation. We had about fifteen students, and many more who were interested but out of town and very disappointed, actually, that they were unable to travel to Beacon to join us. They were thinking about how they could catch a train from Rochester, Buffalo, to get down here to be part of the demos.
So never underestimate the dedication of these kids, this music program, these kids are dedicated in a heatwave at Rambout, sit through demos, and they wanted to be a part of it. And we're very happy to see that the two candidates that are on the list tonight. Very excited about the prospects and the, just the, excited for what's in store.
Absolutely.
We're very excited to. That was dancing in my office on Friday because of that.
Well, it was, it was a wonderful thing to see the student involvement, you know. We had a, you know, a variety of people on the, on the committee, but the students really were given input, true, true input. And I think they really knew it, and they appreciated, they seized the opportunity, and they really, really do care. So we were, we were thrilled to see that.
So thank you for making hiring practices as they should be, including parental input and student input. As parents, we recognize the progress that Beacon City Schools has made, and please continue in that fashion because that affects our kids.
It really makes a difference. Thank you so much. So in, in finishing here, we do look forward to continuing to be involved in music advocacy, fundraising projects, and direct support of music teachers and students K. through twelve in the Beacon City School District as we all move into the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. We want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Landau, and all those who have shown BAM such wonderful support since we first started almost three years ago. We believe that music education is strengthening and growing in this district, and we are proud to be a small part of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other parent groups? Seeing none? We're gonna go to open to the public? Nobody? Okay. Gonna go to committee report? Oh, wait. Superintendent's report, sorry, I'll skip you.
It's okay, Mr. Wright. So I just have a couple of updates. One is that the school district safety plan is, we're gonna email, email out a link to the plan, to the, to the school district community tomorrow. And we've made some, not huge revisions, but we've made some revisions to the plan. And so the state requires that we do a thirty-day public comment period on the plan. And so we're gonna start that tomorrow, just by emailing it out to everyone, making them aware of it. One of the changes we made to the plan that will be starting this year is an anonymous reporting system on the website for folks to anonymously report concerns that they may have regarding safety. And we're also kind of making the members of the group just a little bit bigger with a couple of new representatives on the group as well. So the building safety plans are still a, just for staff only, but the district safety plan is something that is on the website every year in the public views. So we're sending that out tomorrow. And then after that thirty-day public comment period, we'll be working with the board to hopefully adopt those on August twenty-sixth, before the school year starts. The other thing we're gonna be sharing with the community is tonight we have the first read of the code of conduct policy, the revised code of conduct policy. Mr. Wright has been working on that quite a bit, and thanks for highlighting the role of students. That's something we've been working on. Because Mr. Wright, in revising the code of conduct, met with several student-focused groups with schools in session, and those were the groups we really got great input from. And so with this revised code of conduct, you'll see a few things. One thing that the students asked for is they want more clarity with the plan. So air provided clarity with both, with consequences regarding different incidents or the possi-, the range of consequences that can happen. And they also asked for some changes to the dress code. So with the dress code, we went in the direction of making it more gender-neutral, which is a move that a lot of districts are moving towards, and we're excited to be doing that, too. So thanks for highlighting that student involvement piece, and that's something we've really been working on this year. And continuing with the code, the reason I'm talking about the code is we'll be sending out a link to the community tomorrow about that as well. And the code, why we're sending out that link is at the August twelfth board meeting. If we're doing the second read at that meeting, we will have a public hearing on the revised code. So the board meeting will start at seven o'clock, open to the public for a public hearing on the, on the code of conduct. And so we're excited about that. We want to make everyone aware of these two things that we've been working on this spring, and we're excited to implement this summer. And that's, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
All righty. Moving right along, committee reports, including board comments. Nothing from audio, audit diversity? Anthony, anything? Come up with a schedule yet, or?
No, we haven't, we haven't been, we haven't discussed anything yet on diversity.
Okay. And you haven't met since the reorg?
We haven't met since the reorg.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, so, I mean, other comments is, is FYI, the mayor has a new assistant named Colin Malone. So, and, uh, he's, he's, he's actually a pretty, pretty active person, so I think it's a little refreshing that, that he's, uh, he's out doing stuff, getting more active. He's actually, uh, has been coordinating the sustainability forum that's on the morning as well for the city beacon. And I don't know if, I don't know what the agenda is or what they're, what exactly they're gonna be covering, but maybe perhaps there's an overlap, and we can work together, I'm not sure. So, um, so that's what I have on that.
All right. Thank you.
I think you're attending that.
I, I don't know what I'm doing. I've got, I don't know stuff because when I work, it's not good.
I'm, I'm planning to go.
Okay. I'll let you know if I'll text you or something.
Let me know, just because maybe I won't go a few more.
Oh, well, I don't want you to know.
I, I'm, I'm planning to go. I'm leaving town the next morning, so. But I'm planning to go.
Melissa?
I don't have any board comments tonight, thank you.
All right, Kristen?
No comments, and I don't see when I, I don't have it on my calendar for the next facilities meeting, which I know we, I think we did plan.
I don't think we, I don't think we did yet.
I'm just looking at, I'll see it on my calendar. Okay, no comments.
No.
My only comment is that I sent an email to the board about the board retreat that we're trying to plan, and I'm still waiting. Anthony, you haven't responded with you, the only.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, but it'd be great if you did, because we can begin to plan it. And yeah, there's just a couple of other people that haven't responded yet, but hopefully this will happen in September.
Did I respond to that?
You did, actually, yeah. You did. So, thank you for responding.
And the other, only comment I have is, besides doing a board retreat, we have to look at, I'm hoping before a board meeting in either August or beginning of September, we could do a goals meeting prior to the board meeting. So I would like to do it in August, so we have some type of direction when we start in September. But maybe an hour before each board meeting, we could do. I know six o'clock is hard for some people, but maybe if we did like a six-thirty with a seven-thirty board start. So compromise a half hour early, but start a half hour later, so we could get an hour for, for goals in before each of the August board meetings to do goal meetings.
I won't be there for the first board meeting in August.
Okay, and if you can't make it, you can probably submit your goals as to how you want them adjusted and/or revised, or any new ones that you would like, and we could definitely, I will be happy to read them out for you.
We'll work on that.
I have no other comments.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is this, what is our schedule for the rest of the summer for?
Busy.
For, for events?
August twelfth, August twenty-sixth.
The twelfth is the next meeting?
Yeah.
Twenty si- six?
Yeah, on the twelfth, August twenty-sixth, yeah.
August twelfth and August twenty-sixth.
And then September.
Twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth?
Twenty-sixth.
Okay, sorry. All right.
Speech impediment coming up.
No, no, no. Moving on to new business. Eleven point oh one was a discussion for John T. Redman to nominate to serve as the Area Nine Director of the United Sta-, uh, New York State School Boards Association. Anybody need to have a discussion? I didn't want to not have a discussion on it and just put it on the vote, so we put it on there for discussion. He served last year as well.
Yeah.
You, you want to vouch for him?
Huh?
You want to vouch for him?
No. All right, so I need a motion to approve the nomination of John T. Redman to serve as the Area Nine Director of New York State School Boards Association.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carry five zero. All right, there is a second discussion item is our favorite topic of the New York State School Boards Convention. It is approaching rapidly, and to get the best hotel accommodations and make sure that we plan accordingly, I would like to have you guys start thinking about who would be able to attend. It is in Rochester this year. I think it's October twenty-fourth. Anthony, you got your computer up? Look up, October twenty-fourth?
Yeah. No, yeah, it's the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. So please let myself, Meredith or Kelly, and Kelly, Meredith and I, or Meredith or I, but definitely Kelly, if you can attend, so we could set up appropriate accommodations and make sure that we're being fiscally responsive and making sure if you're saying you could go, you could go or not paying for, and not attending.
So one hundredth annual.
One hundredth annual.
And they'll be, will there be a new commissioner on that?
Huh?
Will there be a new commissioner?
Probably not.
Twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth?
Correct. So just, if you could let us know by next board meeting, via email, text, phone call at the meeting, that would be great. So then we could start planning accordingly, because the longer we wait, the harder it is to get a hotel. It's really nice when you get a hotel at the convention, but the longer you wait, you get further away. So. Anybody have anything else that they want to add to that? All right, going to old business. Twelve point oh, oh one, which is approved the official school district newspaper organizational meeting of July first. So at the reorg meeting, we had discussion about approving the official school district newspaper. We have to have the Poughkeepsie Journal because that's the paid paper. And we only need to have one of the two, Beacon Free Press, The Highland Current. At the last meeting, Anne-Marie went over the cost. For all three, I think the Beacon Free Press was the highest, Anne-Marie, which was at eighteen hundred, I believe.
Yes.
The Highland Current was, what, fourteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen hundred. And there was discussion about, this is only for, what, official notices?
Legal notices.
Legal notices. And so there was discussion, why keep three on? It is on the agenda as a old business, and it does have the three newspapers because that's what we had last year, but there was some motions and discussion about going back to two, keeping eighteen hundred dollars for students and not spending it on legal notices. So it is up again.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all three papers as the official dis-, school district newspaper.
Anthony made the motion as is, as is stated on the agenda. Is there a second? Hearing no second, I would like to make a motion to approve the official school district newspaper as the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Highlands Current.
Second.
Meredith, second. Comments or questions?
We, we did, we talked about this last time, and I, for me, it doesn't necessarily matter if it's the Beacon Free Press or the Highlands Current, but it, and I'm, I'm all for communication, but this is, I don't feel like this is effective communication with the community necessarily. It's, it's checking off a box that we're required to do, and that's why I would prefer to not spend the extra fifteen or eighteen hundred dollars here.
I am the same sentiment. I, I could, Beacon Free Press or Highland Current, doesn't matter for your legal notices. I think the Highland Current does a great job, as Jeff is here tonight, covering the district of business. And I, but this isn't for covering happenings of the district, it's for the legal notice aspects. You were gonna say.
Yeah, I mean, I think support of the press is needed, especially in this day and age. And, and I do know that the two papers in question do cater to different sections of the constituents that we serve. The Highland Current has an online, has an online edition, as well as a distribution network that overlaps our district. Beacon Free Press only has a paper version, has different distribution points, as well as mails their, their paper. So, and I do know people that read the Free Press, don't read the Highland Current. I know people that read the Highland Current, don't read the Free Press. I think in an effort to, to make sure that we're informing all constituents and that we're, and then that we're not, also for the spirit of transparency, that we want to be able to continue that communication. We don't want to appear that we're, we're narrowing communication down in, in, to our benefit. I do understand the argument that it would free up a thousand-plus dollars for, for the students, but I also feel that communication to our constituents, whether tax dollars are going to prove our big budget year that we're going, is also very important, and it's basically the cost of, of doing business to make sure that we have their faith. So that's why I still believe that we still need the three papers.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Due to the fact that there wasn't quorum five, it failed, it will be on the agenda for the next one. All right, so twelve point oh two does a stadium discussion. So I put this on here because we received an update, and please, Anne-Marie or Matt, correct me if I give inaccuracies in the update. But, and speaking to our legal, the legal presented the proposal that we asked of doing the twenty-one, plus or minus twenty-one and a half acres separately, and they agreed to it. So we just need the consensus to give to our legal to go forth and write off, write up the RFP saying how we wanted it, that they agreed to it, and give them the okay to, yeah, write it up, so we can get forward with the RFP. Did I misrepresent that at all?
There's a question. Wait, we're, we're writing the RFP also?
No, legal.
The discussion that we had with Dan here about the RFP.
Yeah. Dan's writing it, or County writing it?
I don't know who's writing it, but they agreed to what we asked.
Yeah, yeah.
So to give them the go-ahead, move forward.
Yes.
I just wanted the consensus of the board to say, yes, go ahead, go forward, to agree to what we agreed to. To agree to what we asked of them.
I'll make a motion, we proceed as discussed.
Don't need, it doesn't need to be voted on, it's just, I just needed to have a public consensus that, yeah, the majority of the board, we have five constituents here, that we could go forward. Everybody's good?
Yes.
All righty.
That's great news.
So can you, one of you call Dan tomorrow and say, yeah, go forward? And Dan is on vacation, but he said if we email him.
Yes, we will.
Perfect. All right, the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there any item on the consent agenda a board member would like pulled? Hearing none, I.
Make a motion that we approve thirteen oh-one to thirteen nineteen.
A second?
Second.
Wait, is that the consent agenda?
It is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried five zero. It's so weird writing five zero. Instead of nine or eight. Alright. Need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Meredith, is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried five oh. At eight forty-eight.